Appreciate you.
Sean, I have a just a there's a call in attendee and I just wanted to let them know if they want to speak. They can use star nine to let us know.
Okay. All right, we will open the Estacada City Council meeting. If I could please have you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. I guess we'll go roll call. She's already doing that. You got that all all done? Okay, great. We are at the first citizen and community group comment before we get into the calls. I'd like to give David Buggney, the National Forest Discussion Regarding Wildfires, an opportunity to speak before we get into everything else. So is he there, city? All right. Go ahead when you're ready. You're figuring it out?
Dave, your microphone is on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I got you.
Sorry about that. So good evening. I'll try this again. My name's Dave Buggney and I reside at 30265 Southeast Cole Road in the George area of rural Estacada. For those who don't know me, I've been chair of the Estacada School Board and the Estacada Public Library Foundation. And currently I'm president of the Friends of the Estacada Public Library. I've come before you tonight to ask for your support in formalizing a letter to the U.S. Forest Service, a draft of which hopefully you have in your packet. In this letter, request that the Forest Service convene a task force to study the feasibility of temporarily shutting down the national forests when climatic conditions warrant, to minimize the chance of repeating what we all saw last month. While this won't address lightning caused by wildfires, obviously, it should help to minimize those caused by humans on federal lands, which all evidence indicates is what started the Riverside Fire. So given what our community has suffered through, I believe that Estacada should be at the forefront of this effort to further address human caused wildfire prevention. And I'll be providing testimony about this matter to the Clackamas Son of Water Conservation District on the 20th of this month. And then in addition, I understand the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners should be discussing our letter here during their meeting tomorrow. And I've reached out to a member of the Sandy City Council to see if they're interested, but I haven't heard back from him yet. And I believe Malala in Oregon City should be involved as well, but I have no contacts there, so I don't know who I can talk to there. So if you can, you know, in closing, if you concur with this effort, then I strongly recommend the city of Estacada and any other interested government agencies sign a final version of this letter. Certainly, it's this is just a draft that I put together. Folks can modify it and send it off to the U.S. Forest Service as soon as possible to at least get them thinking about discussing this issue. So thank you for your time. And do you have any questions about what I'm thinking or proposing?
Do we have any questions for David Buggney? Paul?
Hey, Dave, Paul Strobel here. Appreciate this letter. I thought it was a very well written letter. I I've got questions though, or at least one question. What would you have liked to have seen happen? That maybe could have prevented the Riverside Fire. You'd mentioned temporary closures. How would things have looked if this letter, if they if they had some sort of program in place that could have done temporary closures?
That's a good question. I think, you know, from what I understand, you know, this fire occurred on around Labor Day weekend. And there was, looking back at the weather forecast, there was sufficient advance notice of, you know, almost a week that these dry or east wind conditions were going to be developing. And it seems to me that there should be a threshold in place that folks, you know, with wildfire science, although it's evolving, I think that enough is known that when we have droughts that have lasted, you know, we didn't have rain for several weeks or a month or more, combined with these dry humid or dry conditions, low humidity conditions, and the strong east winds, that these are conditions that could be ripe for wildfire. And so it seemed to me that potentially just closing down the forest, maybe for a week or two at the most, you know, not allowing folks to go in there, similar to what we do with, you know, limiting activity on logging sites, you know, we don't allow chainsaws during certain times of day or completely during the day when if similar conditions warrant. So I was thinking that we could do something like that where we limit public access to campgrounds or, you know, any other areas that are deemed appropriate, that that might have gone a long way to preventing this wildfire.
Thanks, Dave. That's what I was looking for. I appreciate it.
The further, sorry, but just to further, you know, kind of expand upon that from what else I've understood, just in the reading I've done over the years, is that the majority of, and as I elucidated in the letter there from the Oregon Department of Forestry, that the majority of wildfires these days are human caused. And so, you know, this would be one way of helping to minimize that that risk.
I agree. Any other questions for David? Kimberly?
Yeah, Kimberly Abels. Well, I wanted to have one question and one comment. The comment was around, I really am glad to see you included fire adapted communities in your three main points. I think that could be something that if we had better direction and how we could make sure that folks are aware of, you know, keeping a fire protectable area around your home, if we could start using burn burn resistant materials and all those kinds of things. I think we could go a long way in aiding this. And my question was, are you aware of or have you confirmed that there's not something like this already started or this conversation already happening at this level? And I'm just curious if what you know about that, if this is needed or if this is already, you know, kind of on their docket.
From what I understand, it's not on their docket, but you know, who knows, you know, the little nooks and crannies of the federal bureaucracy, what conversations should be going on. It seems to me that this is such an obvious thing that it's hard to imagine that that it hasn't been, the subject hasn't been broached previously, but but then again, if so, why wouldn't they bring this up? I mean, it seems to me after such such suffering and economic loss, you know, that people should be bringing this information out to us, you know, to the forefront communities. And I personally haven't seen anything. And I talked to Sean and I've talked to other folks in the Forest Service and they're never, they're not aware of anything either. So, you know, I think in any, like in any government enterprise, it doesn't hurt to send out a letter to reinforce the point that this is important to communities like us. And if there is a, you know, conversations like this brewing, well, please let us know, you know, and if not, then then let us move forward and agree to sit down and talk about all these things. You know, because this is a, this is a evolving issue, you know, as the situation gets worse, I think that more and more action needs to at least be discussed, you know.
Thank you. Any other questions for David? Well, David, I think we're pretty much all on board with this to pursue. Would you say that, councilors? Do you feel that this is something that we want to stand behind? And maybe look at sending a letter out from us to them to figure out where we're at in this and maybe institute something to this effect? Does that sound good?
If we want to, oh, sorry, if you want to throw it on to council business at a different time, I'd like to have a greater discussion about it. There's a lot of different conversations being had, including proper forest management, which I think is a really valuable conversation for for people to be having at the state and federal level, which is proper forest management. That being said, the government is full of finite resources and for, you know, them to only have a certain number of conversations and a certain number of funds to aid in the purposes. I think that proper forest management really needs to be a big focus. That's what I stand most behind. Personally, when we talk about closures or closing access to the public, I really get nervous because I wonder who's going to make that decision and how often they're going to make that decision and where they're going to draw that line. And I just get really nervous when we talk about limiting people's access to public land. Even if we're experiencing some drought, we're only going to experience more of them in the future. I don't think that that would have prevented the Riverside Fire. I don't know if you guys noticed that they did officially change the cause from human caused to unknown. Right now, we're still figuring out how it was started. And until someone tells me that it was actually a person who did it, I'd hate to think that limiting access to public lands is how we're going to respond to this. So I'd like to talk about it more in a council business setting rather than during public comment period.
Fair enough. Well, I think, David, you did a great job at presenting that. And I think we could move that to council business in the future and have this discussion and maybe get this letter out. Is that okay with all of you? Okay.
So Dave, Dave, are you available on October 26th to come back to talk more about this?
Bear with me a moment. Let's see. Yeah, that should be fine. And then by then I'll also know, you know, what the county thinks, but my suggestion would be to just to kind of keep things simple to start off with. We start conflating all these different issues, which obviously are important and need to be addressed. Then we start to, you know, probably get a lot more complex. And it might be just a suggestion, but it might be worthwhile just to start out simple and then work up. Because all these things obviously go into played into this. And so, you know, if we did, if, because if we involve other government agencies like Clackamas County and the other cities, I think it would be great if we could all have them sign onto a joint letter that everybody agrees on. If we start making it more and more complicated, we might be on this, you know, endless treadmill. And so it might be worthwhile just to kind of keep it simple, but then certainly, you know, ramp it up, you know. But as you, if you look at my letter, I talked about, you know, convening a task force where all these different things could be brought to bear. So that that it would be at this point where you could talk about all those things.
Okay. Well, we thank you, David, and we'll see you at the later date to see what we can come up with. And we appreciate you coming forward with this and asking our opinion.
All right. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Well, thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye bye. Okay, I'm sure we've got call-ins. Do we have anybody?
Charity Hughes is first.
Okay, let's hear from Charity Hughes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm Charity Hughes. I live at 101 Northeast Megan Drive. And I thank you guys for taking the time to take my questions. So my questions tonight are regarding the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, or I'll say the DEIC for short, just easier. If you guys want to turn to page 82 in the council packet in order to see what I'm referencing, that would be great. So now I just have a few questions. Some I realize the city council may not have the answers to some of these yet as the committee has yet to be formed. So in which case, they can simply be sort of some food for thought in the future. And that's if this committee gets voted in this evening. So I'm just going to go down the list of my questions and I'll, I'll start with the purposes on the proposal and I'll just ask questions of each one. Again, you may not have answers to them yet. And I have probably about six questions, so I'll just start. Purpose C, provide community oversight and opportunities for the city to have greater accountability to the community on racial equity, inclusion, and diversity initiatives. So my question there would be, what would be an example of accountability the DEIC would provide the city? Okay. Purpose D, provide input and advise the city in the development of a strategic plan to advance diversity, equity, and inclusion among Estacada's government and communities. If at some time, maybe provide some examples of what that might look like. Purpose E, evaluate the city's progress on equity related goals, objectives, and action plans. So my question there, kind of a two parter, would there be like a rubric, would a rubric be created for this evaluation? And what are the repercussions if the city falls short of meeting the goals, objectives, and action plan? And kind of going purpose, purpose E and purpose F kind of bleed together. And purpose F reads as review current policies and procedures with an equity lens. So what specific policies and procedures will the DEIC be reviewing? What data or evidence will the DEIC use when recommending policy and procedural changes? And then finally, if someone could please explain what an equity lens is exactly. So forgive me if I don't know exactly what that means. And probably some people have different explanations for them. But those are all my questions, a lot of them. And again, I know some won't be able, you won't be able to get to this evening, but just some things as a community member, just kind of swirling around in my head that I wanted to ask. So.
Yeah, we appreciate those. Yeah, those are good questions. Um, I would defer this to somebody who actually was involved in putting this together. So I can either give it to Campy or to Abels. I mean, which of you are both together to answer some of these questions? Is that possible?
Sure. Taylor, do you want to start or would you like me to start?
Um, well, yeah, I, I, I would just maybe note sort of as a sort of frame of reference that the, the purpose was, or the purposes were developed sort of keeping in mind that the committee itself, once assembled, will ideally hash out a lot of those details themselves after, you know, a lot of back and forth and some deeper digging. So some of those things, I would say, I think we can provide at least more detail to you right now, but certainly the nitty gritty details of those things. I, I think we are intending for the committee itself to, you know, act as more so as the local and subject experts and help us really refine what those, what it means, you know, what, what the rubric might be if, if it's a rubric that we're working off of for that evaluation. Or what repercussions or probably more, more like course of action will the city take if we find that we're not meeting these performance goals? Yeah. What, what would you want to add, Kimberly?
I would say that I think a lot of these questions would be answered in the strategic plan that this committee helps the city staff to create. And those goals will be brought back to council to figure out exactly how, what we want them to be and where, where we would like to start. But it's just another mechanism for community to come together and kind of work through a lot of questions that I feel like come to the city and give us their perspective on what those impacts are of different policies that we may create or different initiatives that we, that we would like to put forward, whether that comes from the committees, other committees or commissions that we serve on. I would say like an example would be, you know, how we had the discussion around the construction excise tax and to have them weigh in on what different impacts were there, what stakeholders we should be engaging with, what, what might we be missing because we are not, like Taylor said, subject matter experts in this specific space. And as far as an equity lens, my definition of an equity lens and how I have seen it used the most is it's a tool that it's usually like a series of six questions that we can ask to get us thinking a little bit more existentially about, you know, who's not at the table, who haven't we heard from? Who is this impacting? Have we heard from them? Are we thinking about everyone that this could possibly be impacting? So it's just a framework to examine our policies and our procedures and our practices to make sure that we are leading and creating the equitable community that we have listed as one of the goals on, on our city, city website. I think those are the questions that we can answer now. A lot of this, I think, is, is to be hashed out by this, by this committee and what they deem is, is a good place for us to start.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate you guys. Yeah, I appreciate you guys are gonna, in the future, be, you know, asking the community the things that they would like to see in this action plan or strategic plan. So I appreciate that. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Joel Littkey, and I want to remind everyone, there's five minutes and I'll be doing this one minute mark when it's to one minute.
Okay. All right, Joel, are you there?
Sorry, always an extra view button. Can you get to hear me now?
Yeah, we got you.
All right. All right. So absolutely. Yep. After looking over the packet, I want to ask this council and the city staff, with everything that we've gone through, such as the fires and that we did to our city and the realization to come out of there, such as our disaster plan failed miserably. The communications plan that failed miserably. The people are still not back in their homes. They, they, we are going to have to deal with a lack of terrorism over the next couple of years because of the fire. People can't be camping and they'll be regrowing. All these other issues, the water system getting on to 11 inches on the reserves because there was no backup power or whatever caused the main pump to stop working. All these issues going on. And I see on our packets that come in about diversity issues and equality and things like that, which is so far down the line of what the city needs to be talking about right now as a council. And I'm wholly disappointed in the council's choices and the city's choices and what they want to talk about right now when we have things to fix, serious things to fix. If another disaster happened, we don't have a disaster plan that works right now, because at least not from what I saw firsthand. And so I don't know why this, this council is going this way. And I really would, would urge as a citizen that the council takes a look at the priorities that they've been looking at recently and say, hey, we have things to fix. And let's start focusing on fixing those first. It's a sense of priorities. And I just, I want to see what the council and the city had to say about, about me asking that question.
Okay, council, you've heard the question. Does anybody have anything to say in response to that? No? Well, has the mayor? Oh, Kim, go ahead.
Um, one is, I think that based out of a couple of our meetings, we have asked to do an after action report and to do a kind of to take a deep dive to look at what happened with a lot of the disaster management, with a lot of the things that went wrong with the communications that went wrong. And we're waiting for, at least as I understand it, city staff to come back to us with when that can happen and how that can happen and how that can move forward. I agree that all of the things that you listed are critically and important. I don't think that they need to happen on different tracks. I don't think that they are talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion should be a city top priority. And so I think that all of these things can happen at the same time. Some of them, I don't think we have to choose one or the other. And the ones that we are waiting for, we are addressing and we're working towards. And I think having this, talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion as we move forward will help us build better disaster and communication plans and help us with build our infrastructure in a way that is resilient. And so I think that they will actually complement each other. But I do appreciate your concerns.
Yeah, I just don't see how they can connect to that. But, you know, that's my opinion.
Hey, any other comments to be made? I'll make one. As the mayor, you're probably right. I should be focusing more on some of these emergency situations that we are in right now that we have just gone through. It was a big event. But I will try to do my best to get these on the docket as soon as possible so that we are having these discussions. But I appreciate your input. And that's what I have. Anybody else? No? Okay, we thank you, Joel. I appreciate your comments. And we'll definitely take it to heart. So.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Next, we have Jay Simmons.
Jay Simmons. Okay. Are you there, Jay?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can.
Hi. So I live on Lower Main Street. And as a person that is considered a minority as a Native American and with family that is Asian, we would fit into those categories that, that 6A. What's the full name of it? The, the Committee of Racial Justice thing. I think it just said 6A. But on the topic of that, that 6A. Go back to my notes. Okay. On the, okay. Hold on. Can I restart? Okay. As a Native American with family that is Asian, we would fit into those categories that 6A would put us in. I feel that we can find a solution to help the minority community without putting the racial labels on us because the labels would only create racial division. And about 6B, as a Native American, I feel that we need to remind everybody that the land was never really owned and that we're only caretakers of the land for the future generations. And on that note, I also agree with Joel's comments about a disaster plan because our environment, our environment relies on the ability to protect it in a disaster.
Well, we thank you that for that, Jay. Does anybody have any questions for Jay on this? No? Well, we appreciate you bringing your questions up front there and we'll look into some of these.
Okay.
We'll go from there. Is that okay?
Yep.
All right. We appreciate you. Thank you. Next.
Tim May.
Okay, Tim, can you hear us? Are you there, Tim?
I think I'm here. Am I here?
Yeah, you're here.
Okay. So I'm calling and same, same thing. I'd like to thank you all for taking the time to hear the citizens of the city here. We involved ourselves pretty heavily with the fire, fire deal here that just went on. Your diversity, equity, inclusion deal is going on. You know, as a 20 year resident, I really don't understand. I don't see that we have a racial issue too much. We have a lot of minority businesses and quite frankly, a lot of the people that run those businesses are well respected in our community. If we have a, an equity problem, I can, I can agree with that. We do have some issues with economic discrimination in the city. I mean, they're not huge issues, but they do exist. And quite frankly, I think one of our bigger problems would be how to deal with our children. Quite frankly, the fact that we have kids in our schools that hide in bottles of liquor in their lockers and doing the drugs and have no place to hang out. We're sitting here discussing, you know, equity and inclusion, but those, that's our future. Those, those people are the ones we need to be worried about their equity and inclusion more so than minority groups that don't necessarily exist as per se. We are a melting pot of people. So there's, yeah, there are groups that are smaller, but there, you know, that's in any, any group of people, there are going to be smaller groups. So I just don't, I don't see that that's as big a deal as like, like is being said here. We just went through a disaster and how are we going to deal with the next one? That's a big issue because we definitely failed. And yes, we, we came through it really well and things went well, but in the beginning, things were really poor. That, that's not, that's not a good thing. We really do need to make sure that our water system is much better than it is. If you go to the EPA and you look at our water system in general, it's poor. Fact that we don't have a lot of water in the reserves is what I'm understanding because of generator issues. That's an issue. And as far as acknowledging land use, indigenous is kind of a not necessarily the right term. There are no indigenous people to the continent. So indigenous, no, we're all transplants from other places. So to single out any group of transplants and say somehow they have more rights than others, I think you're labeling people and that's not necessary. I think you're labeling people, and that's not necessary. Yes, we owe a debt of gratitude to all of those who came before us, but we don't live in those times. We live in these times, and how are we gonna move forward? Not where, where have we been in the past? I really don't know what all to add to that. I just kind of wanted to put my piece out there and say that we could do better than what we're doing right now. Focusing on things that don't really affect our community is not all that beneficial. So hopefully you guys understand that, and we can move forward from there.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Are there any questions, Katie?
Yeah, Tim, thank you for your comments. I actually wanted to touch, based on something that you talked about, which is our kids and how they have nowhere to go. I was wondering, actually, Tim, I'll ask you first, and then I'll kind of open it up to the rest of the group. Last year, I did try to start the Estacada Youth Council. The purpose behind that was to get a group of teenagers, youth, together from our area to sort of tackle a lot of those issues on their own. A lot of the teenagers that we have here in the city are more aware of the issues that they're facing, more so than anyone else. So that being said, there wasn't a lot of support and a lot of, there wasn't a lot of excitement about it last year, but do you think that it would be worth us pursuing this year as a city to try to reinstate that youth council that never really did quite come to fruition? Just to help tackle some of those issues that you're talking about? Tim, I guess the question for you first, and then I'll open up to the group.
Yeah, I agree with you completely, and I do think that that's a direction that would benefit us all. From a personal level, to be quite honest with you, until the fires, I really didn't move outside of my neighborhood into the whole community as far as what was going on around us. So hopefully I'll be more astute, keeping track of what's going on around me, and I would be more than interested in helping you in any way possible to see that come to fruition. That's a good idea.
Thank you very much. And I guess, councilors, how do you feel about us trying to get that youth council back up and running? Again, it never really did happen when I got the approval a year before, I guess, last year. When I got the approval, it was May, so really not a lot of time to get that youth council started up again. But I think that there's a lot of excitement right now, and I want to hear your thoughts.
Okay, Jerry?
Well, we were in full support of it last year, you know. I don't see any problem, you know, trying to get it started again. You know, go for it. If you need any help, let me know. If I can help in any way, I will.
Yeah, I don't think anybody wasn't in support of it at all. I think that there, that could be something that you'd be great at heading up, just like I'm the president of the Youth Basketball League, right? I use a lot of time to help youth in basketball and all that kind of stuff in sports heavily. So maybe that is something that you can tackle and kind of spearhead and really go to, but you have everybody's support.
You've definitely got mine. I think it's a great idea as well.
Yeah, and then I actually wanted to comment, I've heard it twice now, about a water issue that we had that I have not heard of. Denise, do you know?
Yeah, no, and I don't know where that's coming from either, but we never did lose power at the water plants. Didn't lose it. It had one bump one night that we were warned about because they had to make a switch somewhere. The problem was, we have 2 million gallons of storage, which is a good amount for this city, and we can produce over a million gallons a day. And what has happened is, this was a time that we were low on our reservoirs when everyone should have been out of town, and we realized people had left town and left their sprinkler systems on. So once we realized that, we had our guys go around and shut off the sprinklers around town, and they did about 50. And we also talked to the firefighters about coordinating draws out of the, out of the system and using the river. And once that happened, then we were able to catch right back up with our reservoirs. So I don't know where the thing came that there was a, it had nothing to do with power. It had all to do with, what was it, Sadie? It had everything to do with about 8 million gallons of water being used over a three- or four-day period, and we weren't being able to catch up till we figured out what the problem was, so.
Well, does that answer your question, Justin? On that one? Yeah, Tim, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you for your time, and one more thing on the water deal. It really doesn't matter how much water we have if it's not really drinkable. Quite frankly, I use bottled water. Things turn red in the water here. And like I said, look at your EPA reports. They're not good. You guys have a great day. Thank you very much.
Well, we thank you for your comment.
I was gonna say, I don't think I've ever had an issue with our water, not. I've never noticed red or anything.
I will send you guys our EPA reports that we turn in monthly, yeah.
Cool, thank you.
All right, so next.
The next speaker is Donald Allen Jr., and if you can please state your name and your address for us, that would be great. And you have five minutes.
Donald?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. My name is Donald Allen Jr., and I live on Highway 224. And I'm a board member of the Estacada Community Watch. I want it to be known that I'm speaking of my own accord. What I have to say is my own opinion and not necessarily the opinion of any group that I'm affiliated with. I have a couple of things to ask about on these ordinances that it looks like are set up, the 2020-03 ordinance and the 2020-17 ordinance. I can understand the issues of inequity, and I'd like to say that I have personally looked at the maps as far as the lands go that the indigenous people have lost over the centuries, let alone decades. And it is alarming if you take a good look at those pictures. But those are things that are done at the federal government level, and I don't believe the city really should be delving into that area. There are people with different bills they're trying to get passed to handle the land uses that have been taken away from the indigenous peoples. So I think it's somewhat of a waste of time for the city to delve into the land part at that level. It would much more likely be a state matter, and as far as I'm concerned, I'm sure it's actually a federal matter. And should be handled in that way, and if things aren't happening the way people want them to, they got to introduce new bills. As far as establishing diversity and inequity inclusion committee, I think that all of that should be looked at closely before just saying, here's the ordinance, and let's make it part of our city operations. The city has plenty of things to take care of already, so many things. It's something else when you get something like this fire and all the things around it put on your plates also that aren't working right. So I would say that maybe you should have more conversations about this before you just pop down the ordinances and say they're part of the city's operations, because I think that's just jumping to a conclusion too quickly. Rather, I think they should have good conversations about it and finalize it after they've really put down what is gonna happen. Even the ones that have put this together don't seem to have good descriptions of what they're talking about. So I would think they should at least put on the brakes a little bit and talk about it more before we try to make them ordinances to get laid into effect right now. And that's pretty much all that I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Donald. Are there any questions for Donald before we let him go? No? Okay, thank you, Donald, for your comments. We'll look into these things. So we appreciate it. Thank you. Next.
And lastly, we have Kristi Merritt.
Okay, Kristi Merritt, can you hear us? Are you there, Kristi?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we got you.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. How, first of all, I live at 481 Southwest Niprood. I've lived here about 10 years. My stepdad lived here the majority of his life. So my first question is, how is the DIC going to help coordinate better disaster protocols? We know that the Riverside Fire was horrendous. Six years ago, we had the 36th pit fire. The same, like literally six years in between the two fires. They've devastated the forest. They've taken a lot from this community, the two fires have. So I would like to know how working hand-in-hand with the DIC is going to make a better disaster relief system for our community? So that's the first question. The second question, it is another water topic. Somebody said that their water turns rust red. I have that same problem at the end of Lake Shore eight or 10 times a year. Our water, we cannot drink it. I have to get bottled water for my dogs. They can't, we just can't use the water six to 10 times a year. The first year it was about six times, but then it's been about eight or 10 the last three or four years that we can't use our water at all. So those are just my questions.
Those are good questions. I'll refer it to, let's give it to Denise, sir.
Well, I can help with the water one. We have your address, and it was Mr. Allen, was it Mr. Allen that had the other, or Tim May? But I will have our water guys come down and talk to you about your water and maybe test your water and see what the problem is down there.
They have come down, and they've seen our water, and they said it's perfectly acceptable to drink.
And it's during the time where you said it's red and?
Yes.
Okay, I'll check into that report for you.
Thank you.
And then the other topic, I don't think the DEIC committee has anything to do with the fire. It's a completely separate thing, so they wouldn't have anything to do with the fire, the, you know, changing things for the fire.
Right, but the one-
I think that was your-
I'm not sure, I'm not sure who stated it, but they said it could work hand-in-hand with, you know, together. And I guess my personal opinion is, we need to get a better disaster relief system in place sooner rather than later.
I can answer that, because I think she's referring to a statement that I made just real quick. I guess by stating that a DEI type of committee helps us to make sure that we're centering our most vulnerable communities, which then helps everybody else. So it wouldn't be that they're helping in the operational part of the disaster plan, but just providing that equity lens for the communications aspect of it and to make sure there's no groups that we're missing or not reaching by how we do the operations and we implement the disaster plan.
Okay.
Okay. Does that help answer your question, Kristi?
Not really, but I'll take it.
Okay, well, we appreciate your comments, and Denise will look into the water issue, and we'll go from there. I appreciate you calling in.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, anybody else on the line? No? Okay, we'll now move into the consent agenda. All of you have had a chance to look at the consent agenda, and you've read the proclamation. I'm thinking, right? Everybody's read it? Okay, so can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, but first, can I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes? Okay. Moving along, we are now at the department and committee reports. So I know none of you have really had meetings, but I'm gonna try to go around and see if anybody might have something they want to report on. We'll start with Jerry. Do you have anything tonight?
My meeting this week was postponed till next week, so I'll have one. I'll have a report next week, or next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Let's go with Katie.
Does anyone else have one to go before me?
Yeah, I can pick somebody else. Struble, Justin?
No, I have a meeting this Wednesday, so I'll have an update next council meeting.
Okay, Kimberly, anything? No? Okay, Katie, you're it.
All right, I guess it is my turn. So I am the liaison for the Fire Board, so I prepared a statement, and then I'm going to actually introduce Directors Matthew Silva and Director Ken Oliver. So I know that they are participating in the call together. If someone wants to work on getting them into this room, because they'll be speaking in a minute. So in January 2019, upon being sworn into my council seat, I volunteered to be the council liaison for the Estacada Fire Board. And it was a role I took very seriously, and I dedicated my time to learning about our fire district. And I attended the majority of our Fire Board meetings. I watched as both fire districts participated in the feasibility study published in June 2019 that concluded that the citizens of Estacada would receive more and better life-saving protection services if Estacada were to merge with Clackamas Fire District. This conclusion was based on data and independent review of both fire districts. I greatly admire and respect Director John McAdoo and the statements he's made about Clackamas Fire and Estacada Fire, but I want everyone to keep in mind too that Director McAdoo has been against the merger since before the feasibility study was even conducted in June 2019, and all of his concerns were brought up as part of the feasibility study that concluded Estacada residents received greater protection under Clackamas Fire District. And I would not expect his opinion to change even a month away from the election. So I just want everyone to take everything with a grain of salt. That being said, I made my endorsement of the merger based on the facts, the data, and the feasibility study that says that the people I represent right here in Estacada would be better protected under Clackamas Fire District. And keeping to that goal of better protection for the city I love and its people is why I still support YES on 3-561. So that being said, I'm going to turn it over. I'm gonna return, I'm gonna turn over the remainder of my time to Estacada Fire Board Directors, Director Matthew Silva and Director Ken Oliver, to continue speaking on this and to help answer any questions.
Thank you very much. This is Matthew, President of the Fire Board, Mayor and councilors. We developed a letter from the other four board directors that's gonna be in the paper, and I would like the opportunity to read it. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can you read a letter if you don't mind?
No, that's just fine. Go right ahead.
As elected Directors of Estacada Fire District Number 69, we are advocating a yes vote on Measure 3-561 to merge our fire district together with Clackamas Fire District 1. We are very disappointed and alarmed by the misinformation of the facts surrounding Estacada Fire's budget and this merger opportunity by our colleague, John McAdoo. We first want to publicly state the support that we have for our career volunteer and staff members of Clackamas Fire District 1, several who came from Estacada Fire District and many who are also residents of our community. Their actions and bravery within our community is seen every day, and for that, we thank them for their service. We entrust Clackamas Fire to investigate any issues raised by our neighbors during the recent wildfires and are seeing person-to-person follow-ups, after-action reviews, and post-incident programs being conducted that will help build confidence, trust, and take lessons learned that will benefit everyone in the future. Our board recently unanimously approved a proclamation to thank our community for their support during the September 2020 wildfires and to those who supported the firefighting efforts, provided equipment and resources, and assisted in relief support efforts. The outcome of those devastating fires was made better by the combined team effort of all of our citizens and firefighting teams. The upcoming merger is about more than a once-in-a-century fire event. It's about the 1,500-plus emergencies that occur in our community annually. After evaluating the data, the financial reality, the firefighting staff opportunities, our history as an agency, and completing a comprehensive feasibility study on future options, all facts point to this merger being in the best interest of our citizens, our businesses, and our fire district, and our- and our fire district and our community's future. The June two thousand nineteen feasibility study conducted by an outside neutral consultant had only one conclusion, the most logical course would be for Clackamas Fire District one and Estacada Fire District to merge. A yes vote increases the firefighter staffing at the Estacada main station to four firefighters at all times with at least one being a paramedic, something we were never able to do ourselves. Four person staffing is critical to meet OSHA and N F P A national standards and accepting less when you can attain a four person staffing is unacceptable. With this merger, it is guaranteed. A yes vote also provides us additional services permanently available, including water rescue, fire prevention, fire safety and education, hazardous material response, guaranteeing twenty-three plus firefighters on every fire and numerous other support services available as a larger district. In addition, a yes vote provides that we will have volunteer firefighting staffing via duty shifts at the George Road Fire Station, again, something we could never do before. Our road travel as a fire district has been difficult at times and as fire directors, we have been very proud of the history of the Estacada Fire District. Our board majority has worked hard to try to provide a reasonable, permanent, improved solution to our community's future by presenting this merger opportunity to our voters and joining a successful regional fire protection model that has proven itself and provides us better service. Our district adopted vision statement includes making data-driven decisions, embracing change and being good stewards of our resources. This merger proposal follows all of those visions. While we respect his right to a dissenting vote throughout this process, Mr. McAdoo's statements create confusion on what reality would be if we revert back to Estacada Fire and make misstatements and makes misstatements regarding the facts of Estacada Fire District's annual budget. His recent claim quote that the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Estacada Fire District budget revenue is approximately four point nine million and Estacada Fire has sufficient revenue to fund its own fire department is a gross misstatement. In actuality, the annual revenue is three million. His statement will confuse voters and imply that there is more annual revenue than there is and borders on misformed disinformation. His proposal to go back to exactly where we have been and what didn't work is impractical and nearly impossible. His claims are not supported by the facts. His actions are not in the best interest of the community and we cannot allow them to be unchallenged. We hope that our community looks past this misinformation and the current passions and emotions focuses on higher service levels, supports our firefighting personnel and trusts those who live here. We have served on this board and spent many months doing everything we could to ensure the path forward we suggest to all of you is the right one. We support a yes vote on measure three dash five six one and unconditionally support a better future for our community. No fire district resources or personnel were used in the development of this letter. Signed Matthew Silva, President, Ken Oliver, John Bresko, Ed Thorson, Directors, Estacada World Fire District number sixty nine.
So, Mr. Mayor and Counselors, talking about like an incident, uh, obviously this was something bigger than Clackamas or Estacada Fire has ever had. So one of the things that, as you're well aware with your la- last meeting, a lot of people voiced concerns. Well, we get phone calls every day with those exact same concerns and what we've been doing is having the, uh, Clackamas Fire District launch an investigation. They're doing interviewing and there's going to be a complete after action report afterwards, not only to identify what did go right, but also to identify what needs to improve. And there'll be an improvement plan put together. So I think, uh, what we're trying to, um, bring to your attention is there's many different views and, and there's some things that went wrong, some things that went real well and what those things are, we're going to figure them out, we're going to get an improvement plan together. And Clackamas would do it, we would do it. It doesn't matter which entity it is.
Well, we thank you for your statement and your explanation and your clarification. That, uh, definitely gives us some clarity as to, to your perspective. So I'm going to ask the council, are there any questions you'd like to have for these gentlemen? Jerry, go ahead.
Um, so one question that I've been asked, uh, a lot over, um, so, you know, since this incident, um, is once, uh, it, it, so if this merger goes through, um, once Clackamas Fire is completely, um, in charge and taken over, um, so you said that they, that they guarantee staffing of four, um, four at the main Estacada Fire, uh, two at George. How long, how long do they have to guarantee that? Um, the, the, the concern that I've been getting is, uh, you know, once they've completely taken over, staffing is completely at their discretion. And, uh, um, you know, how long do they, how long do they have to guarantee that they're going to have four at Estacada Fire plus volunteers and volunteers up at, uh, up at George too, um, at all, twenty-four hours a day from what I understood? So, um, yeah, I mean, if you can answer that, that, that'd help me a lot.
You betcha. Can I weigh in? So to give you the example, when Beaver Creek, um, when they did the exact same thing, merged with Clackamas, they only guaranteed three people per shift, but because Beaver Creek's on the end of their boundaries, they increased staffing to four people twenty-four seven, exactly like they're going to do here. We're at the end of their boundary, so it's very typical for them to do that. The rest of their fire stations have like three people, like a ton of them do. And so we're actually, we negotiated that in when we were doing the preliminary after we did the study and then when we were negotiating vaccine, they gave the guarantee and then they also put it in writing.
Does that help you, Jerry?
Um, but, but how long, that's what I'm saying is how long? How long do they have to, do they, I mean, because they can, they can change that. They, I mean, from what I understand, they can, it's at their discretion. They can change that at any time. I mean, how long did they put it in writing that they were going to guarantee that, that amount of staffing, you know, out of Estacada and the church?
Well, there's no end date on it. I mean, we negotiated with good faith bargaining and they agreed to continue it. So in the chances with the city, the way it's growing now, it's not going to surprise me in a year or two if they don't put in ambulants or another rescue in this location that we still would not be able to do. You know, I think, I think, uh, I think they're extremely sincere. I don't think they would back out of a deal and if they did, they would have a huge lawsuit from those of us that had not only a handshake, but also a document that says that they're going to do it.
Director Silva, on, on that note, did you say that you've had a lawyer give the, the, um, advice to you that because writing is important?
They said to get in writing because it could be legal, we could go after them. But I, this is the thing, I don't think they would have any intention to back out of something that they negotiated with us and with the citizens. And you can't go and put four people in a fire station and then suddenly lessen the amount of service you do unless you turned around and said, I'm not going to tax you anymore, I'm going to tax you half of what we did before. Once you establish that, that is a political nightmare. And I don't think, you know, as a board director, I guarantee you that the board would not allow that to happen. If it happened, it was brought to their attention, it would change. And I don't believe there's, there's any firefighter that would allow it to happen also.
So if I may, just for a second, uh, you mentioned the board. Now, uh, your board dissolves after a year, does it not? And it becomes, uh, Clackamas, is that right?
It does, it does. And so we have one person that's elected on the board from Eagle Creek there because they got annexed in, even though we deliver service there in Eagle Creek because we're closer. Um, and then there's going to be two positions open on their board this coming, uh, I believe it's the May election and, um, uh, Ken has agreed to run for it and represent, um, our ideals and what we believe in and what the citizens of Estacada believe in.
If, if there's a yes vote for this merger, I, then I will run for one of their board positions.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for them?
Well, I just want to clarify, um, I wasn't saying that they were going into it with the intent of lessening. I'm just saying, you know, um, just like what happened with Estacada Fire, times, time, you know, there's lean times, there's, you know, th- this happens. And I just want to make sure that, you know, if this does, if this merger does go through, that, you know, the promises that they're, that they're making to us, you know, that they fulfill these promises. I mean, that's, that's my main concern because, I mean, we're, we're going, we're going forward, you know, if this, if this merger goes through, we're going forward with this banking that that is what's going to happen. You know, we're, we're, we're depending on that to happen. But again, then we, we have no, as a city, we don't have any say over if they do decide later down the line, if, if times are lean, you know, that, that they, you know, cut staffing or, you know, they, they, they do this, they do that. Um, what I'm saying is I, I, I just want to know that they're going to, you know, actually fulfill these promises even, even in ti- even when times are lean. Because like I said, we're go- we're depending on it. You know, if this merger goes through, we have no say. We're, we're leaving it up to them and we're depending on them. So that, that's my concern and that's the concern I'm getting from people that I'm talking to. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Paul, you have something to say?
Yeah, Director Silva, um, you'd mentioned that the Clackamas was working on an after-action review. Do you have any, any idea what the timeline on that is?
I believe it's December, December. There, it's going to be delivered to the board in December and it'll become a legal and working document. From the after action will come an improvement plan to address any shortcomings or maybe to identify other avenues like local resources, um, that we could be using.
I think, I mean, it would be, uh, uh, great if something were to come out ahead of time. You know, I, I think, uh, for, for a lot of people, there, there are trust issues now after the fire and just something to help alleviate that trust issue, to help build that relationship between Clackamas and the folks of Estacada, I think would be really helpful. Um, but I know since, since we pulled out, I've been getting so many questions as, as a councilman, where, where do, or the counselor, where, where does the council stand? And I can only speak for myself, um, but they also want to know where the board stands as well too. So it's great to hear from you too, to get your input, um, and, and statement as well too. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Any other questions for these gentlemen? No? Okay, we thank you gentlemen for bringing that forward. And, uh, we appreciate the clarification and it's good to hear from you and, and, and see what's happening and kind of get an understanding. So we appreciate that and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, we are now at, well, I don't have anything and we'll go to the city managers' report. How about, how about that? Uh, you're, you're-
Okay, I, yeah, I got it. Um, I just had to, uh, I don't have a lot, but I just wanted to let you know that Melanie Weir and I are on a Metro Wildfire Economic Recovery Team that was put together by the state to go over the fire. Um, everyone was talking about a, uh, um, after action review to review what went on with the fire and it's in, it has state people, county people, Nancy Bush from the county, uh, Mount Hood Territory people, and then all the cities that were affected. So those meetings start this Wednesday and they're every Wednesday until December twenty-ninth. So from one to two thirty, so we'll be getting a lot of good information out of that. But Melanie is working, um, on a report for you, uh, well, of what we know now before this meeting starts. So we'll be getting that to you soon.
Okay, great. Thank you. So that's all you got? All right.
Yep.
All right.
Do you mind me asking, um, so is there any plan for us as a city to have our own in, uh, after action review and if there's going to be participation from members of this council who are invited to participate in the after action review?
For the city, um, yeah, we can, we're going to do something like that after we get, uh, we wanted to get some information from the county and then we'll start that process. And yes, we would ask you guys for, uh, participation.
Uh, how soon can we expect that to, to happen? It sounds like we've a, a lot of interest in seeing-
Yeah, it'll probably start, yeah, it'll probably start, um, we're hoping to start it before Thanksgiving, which is about a month away. And it probably will take a month or two to develop, but, uh, we're going to try to start, um, before Thanksgiving hits.
Okay. All right. Good, thank you. Any more questions before I let Denise go? All right. We will now close the city council and open up the public hearing. So I will now close the city council, uh, meeting and open the public hearing on the, uh, annexation application twenty twenty oh four annex. Um, do any members of the council wish to abstain or declare ex parte? No? Okay. The council will now hear the staff report on the proposal.
Alrighty. Okay. Um, so this is, uh, twenty twenty dash oh four annex. I'm going to share my screen, hang tight. Okay, can you all see my, the presentation? Okay.
Yes, we can.
All right. Um, so there we go. Okay. So, uh, this proposal is requesting annexation of ten acres of property comprising two tax lots, one hundred and one oh two of tax map thirty-four E twenty-one. Um, it's in eastern Estacada, right on the urban growth boundary, which is there on southeast Lawrence Road. Um, the application includes a corresponding zone change from the county zoning R R F F five rural residential farm forest, um, to the city zoning R one low density residential that is consistent with the comprehensive plan. They're not proposing any change from what's designated in the comp plan. Um, and the applicant did submit some tentative, um, future development plans, but, um, the actual subdivision application was not included with the annexation application. So it's just the annexation of the property. Um, the applicants here are Cedar Ridge Homes. And, um, these are the addresses, three oh six, seven, three and three oh seven, oh one, southeast Lawrence, uh, also parcels one and two of, uh, partition, uh, that was done in two thousand and four. Alrighty. Um, so here's a kind of screen grab of the comprehensive plan map. Just once again to show that the, um, zoning designation of the parcels, which are outlined there on the right-hand side of the screen. The zoning designation is R one low density residential. And then you can see it's a, the, the southern lot is a flag lot, um, that fronts out to Lawrence Road there, which is the urban growth boundary. So it's right on the eastern edge of the urban growth boundary. Okay, um, service considerations, uh, kind of a checklist here. There is sufficient sewer capacity, um, and because of the topography, they're going to be using a sewer lift station there near the site, um, which the city engineer also indicated there, uh, was sufficient capacity at that sewer lift station for, um, any potential development. Um, water is available at Current Creek, Current Creek Estates, which is, um, just to the south and west of the property. Um, fire, police and the school district are already, uh, provided in that area. Um, just a note on, um, needed housing, the state, uh, requires us to, um, review, uh, land use applications that are, you know, related to residential lands, um, against our housing need, um, identified in our H and A, which as we've discussed before, we don't have a formal H and A, but we do have the, um, housing memo, which did find, um, that in the projected twenty years, we will have a, a projected need for all types of housing. Um, so the proposed development would, um, most likely only provide, uh, that single-family type of housing, um, unless they submitted a lot of conditional use applications for duplexes, um, which they've not indicated, um, that they intend to do. Um, but just a note here, kind of to remind ourselves that the, the biggest need in that, um, twenty-year, uh, projection will be for multifamily housing. So while this application will meet a need, it doesn't meet the, um, the strongest need that there is in the city.
Can I ask a quick question about that, Taylor? I don't mean to interrupt your presentation, but I don't want you to go too far. Um, the, the last number I got for single-family homes that have been approved for development so far, uh, was encroaching on that number of single-family homes you show on the graph. Um, and in addition to that, there were seventy-five already built this year since this memo's come out. Um, and in addition to that, there were 75 already built this year since this memo's come out. Do you know where we stand with that, uh, equals total new single-family detached building units of that 485? And where we are on what's already been approved and what might be coming down the pipeline?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, but, um, in that, you know, yeah, you're, you're right. Just in the last year or so between when this housing memo came out, um, and even in the time between Clackamas County beginning that regional HNA, them coming up with the housing memo findings and then even publishing that report, um, just the amount of growth that we've had um, and development in that time certainly, uh, will make these numbers very different. So no, I don't, I don't know what the, the real-time numbers would actually look like. But if we do move forward with a, with a formal, you know, completed HNA, we would, we would get some updated numbers there. And I imagine that you're right, they would be, um, pretty different from what's, what's here.
I, I was just curious if you had that number at the top of your head. You know, um, do you mind doing me a favor in the next council meeting that you come to? It doesn't have to be the next council meeting in general, but the next one you participate in, do you mind having an update for us when, you know, about homes that have been approved and, and kind of where it compares to the baseline HNA that we're using from the county?
Yeah, yeah, that should be doable just with like building permits. I think we could get that.
That would be awesome. Thank you very much. Yeah.
Um, cool. Alrighty. Um, one of the requirements, of course, for, um, an annexation is that the property is adjacent to city limits. So this is just another screen grab showing that that southern tax lot 102 is adjacent to, um, the area that will soon be developed in a forthcoming phase of Curran Creek Estates to the south. Um, pretty straightforward annexation, um, for conditions of approval, um, ultimately just some, uh, adminis- administrative language that ensures that, um, the property is annexed how it should be. So, yeah, any questions from the council?
Hey, do we have any questions for Campy? Anybody?
Just, uh, kind of aside, tax lots, uh, this butts against, uh, is adjacent to tax lots 30304. That's part of the Curran Creek piece there. The, uh, i- is there gonna be a chance that this is gonna carry a road out all the way to Lawrence from Curran Creek? Or do we not know yet? We're just, we're not looking at anything being developed. Um, we're just looking at annexation. Any, any input there?
Um, right, yeah, you're, you're exactly right that, um, this application is only the, um, the annexation piece. The future development or the future subdivision application would be where the planning commission and then you all would review their, um, you know, proposed connectivity. And if there were any desire for them not to, um, take access from Lawrence, that would be the conversation where, you'd have some, yeah, negotiation around where they're gonna take access from.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions, then? Okay. Taylor, you did a great job presenting that. I will now, uh, read, uh, is there any correspondence regarding this application?
Nope.
No. Okay. I will now read a statement about evidence presented at the hearing, an issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba must be raised prior to the close of record at the final eventuary hearing on the specific application. Such issue shall be raised with sufficient specificity so as to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing or in person or by letter or failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issues precludes an appeal to Luba on that issue. Okay, is the applicant, uh, on the line here anywhere?
I did see, um, someone from the applicant team, Scott Clayton.
Uh, would he like to speak on this?
I don't know how to, I don't think I have powers.
Maybe do you want to bring on, okay, you did. So he's on.
Okay. Scott?
You're, you're on if you want to unmute.
Yeah, I don't really have much to say. Uh, pretty straightforward. Still working on the plan itself. Just annexation at this point.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions from the council before we move on? Okay. There's no speakers that wish to speak on this? Any, uh, anybody?
Is there anyone out there that wants to speak on this? I know there was a John that had his hand up. Was that for the public hearing? Put your hand up if you want to talk at the public hearing. Okay, he, he is for the public hearing, I guess, so.
Okay.
So if you'll state your, your name and your address for the record.
You probably need to unmute yourself.
There he is. This was John. Yeah, I wanted to.
This is for the public hearing on the annexation.
Yeah, I did not want to speak on that. I want to speak later on.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, we'll take you. There's no other comp people with their hands up, Mayor, so.
Okay, great. Uh, does staff or the applicant have any other questions before we move on? Okay, at this time, I'll now close the public hearing and open the city council. Well, you've heard the annexation application 2020 oh four annexing. Um, can I have a motion? For this or you want to do roll call? Would roll call be better? No? Okay, do a motion.
I move to approve annexation application 2020 dash zero four dash annex.
Yeah, but first and a second. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, but first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now we're at council business. The first thing we have on council business is ordinance 2020 zero zero three and ordinance establishing the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee of the City of Estacada and adding chapter 2.33 Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee to the Estacada Municipal Code. So on this, I will hand this off to, I'm not sure, am I gonna hand it to?
Taylor, Taylor.
Taylor, okay.
Yep.
Um, alrighty, so uh, we, or I, we presented, um, this staff report basically, um, as it is at the last meeting and, um, minor, minor edits to, um, clarify, uh, what exactly we mean by youth. Youth being, I think there was some discussion on, um, yeah, youth being, uh, people 18 to 25 years old. And, um, excuse me, also to add, um, LGBTQ plus, um, the acronym stands for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer and plus, um, to the list of, um, commonly underrepresented or historically underrepresented groups. And then, um, yeah, just amended the recommendation to, uh, to be that the council adopt the ordinance forming the committee. For the purpose of the meeting, would it be helpful if I ran through all of the content of the, uh, staff report again? Or do folks feel pretty well-versed?
I'm pretty well-versed and, uh, I think everybody here, uh, I'm like getting consensus that we've all heard it. Okay, so are there any questions to this? Before we go on? No? Okay, so I guess I will enter.
Oh, go ahead, Paul. Question, I got a question from someone in the, uh, public asking about, uh, disabilities. Is, are, are they, are they factored into this? What's, what's the stance with disabilities?
Uh, Taylor?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
I, uh, I guess my, um, personal and academic, uh, and, uh, professional experience would, um, lead me to absolutely think that they, that people with disabilities should be included. And I, I guess I just, uh, personally did not, uh, think to, and that's, yeah, my mistake. But I, I think it would be up to the council if you wanted to add that, um, we could make that, edit to the final, you know, add that in as an amendment, um, I think in the motion that you would, that you would make.
And I think the council's all on board with that. Is that something that we'd like to add into this? Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think that would be something we'd wanna put into this. So knowing that with the change. Uh, Katie, go ahead.
Um, I don't necessarily have, uh, any questions for Taylor, but I, I do want to address something. Um, I heard a lot of people at the citizen, uh, comment period at the beginning of this meeting talk about how, I don't think that the focus should be on, on this. Honestly, it's a conversation that's already being had, um, and I think that it's appropriate for our, our city to have it as well. I do want to say that in the last couple of months, uh, I've heard a lot of accusations about how Estacada is a racist town. Um, and I look forward to this committee being formed because either this committee is going to find and come to the conclusion that Estacada is really not a racist town, um, in which case, uh, we can easily dissolve this committee if we find no purpose in it. If not, if it doesn't come to that conclusion, then it'll, uh, end up benefiting our city in a way that helps us move forward into the future and, um, involving more people in the conversation. So, um, that being said, uh, it's a conversation that's already going to end up happening. There's no better time than the present. I do want to focus on the after-action review as it relates to the wildfires and the experiences that we had in September. But right now, I just want to let everyone know that this conversation's already going to happen. Again, no better time than the present. And, and I think that different people will also be having this conversation as opposed to the, the after-action review conversation as well. So I just wanted to address those concerns for the citizens who spoke up earlier.
Okay, we appreciate that, Katie. Thank you. Any other things to be said before we put this up for a motion? No? Okay. I am now asking for a motion on ordinance 2020 oh oh three and ordinance establishing Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee of City of Estacada adding chapter 2.33 Diversity and Equity Inclusion Committee to the Estacada Municipal Code along with the, uh, people with disabilities, uh, added into it. And that is the motion on the table. Do I have a motion?
I motion that we accept, uh, this ordinance for your amendment as just stated, Mayor DeQuinn.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, but first and second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, the next on my list here is a resolution 2020 dash zero one seven, a re- resolution of the Estacada City Council establishing the City of Estacada land acknowledgement. Okay, do I have any questions as to this? Before we go on. Katie?
Um, I don't disagree with the intention or the, the premise of why we're doing this, um, or the, the method to go about it necessarily. However, I, my question is, who did draft this? This statement that we want to have displayed on City Hall, um, and on the city's webpage and spoken once a month during our meetings. I want to know who drafted it and whether or not it's been, uh, reviewed by or approved by a tribe of any indigenous people. I just want to make sure that if we as a city are going to take these steps to pay homage to or honor those who came before us on this land, that we're doing it in the right way. And I, and I'm, I'm just wanting to know that we did take those extra steps before we just go run with it.
Good question. I don't even know where to direct that, but I'll, I'll go with, uh, Campy again. Did we, uh, do due diligence in this as far as tribes go? Have we notified them? Have we sat down with them and gone over this? Maybe what they'd like to see in it or? Can you answer that?
On my side, and I'll defer to Kimberly for her work on this too, um, on my side of the drafting, no, but, um, there are a number of resources, um, and just information published by tribes available online, um, some of them kind of function like a, um, how to, how to draft your own, um, land acknowledgement because they can and should be very different based on what type of agency or group you are and obviously geographically where you are. And so I know that Kimberly did a lot of digging, um, and so maybe if you want to speak a little bit more to, yeah, how you came up with some of those things. And then, um, she did also, um, pass it around for some review among staff, uh, as well, so.
Yes, uh, like, uh, like Taylor said, there's several resources available, um, on, on how to do a land acknowledgement, why to do a land acknowledgement. Resources on how to identify, um, which indigenous people used to be on the land that are known. Lots of those names are lost. I do have a personal friend who is a, a consultant and a member of, um, the, some indigenous tribes in Clackamas County. And she did review this and, um, gave her seal of approval on it. She, it's something she does as part of her work as a, as a consultant. So, yeah, that, I guess that, that would be what, what I could add to that.
Okay. Any questions to this? Paul?
So I, I looked it through, looked at what other councils are doing as well too. I, I support acknowledging indigenous people who paved the way ahead of us. I am reluctant though to add an ongoing statement to our city council meetings. I, I'd be supportive of another way of doing something on, uh, city charter or plaque some, something that could be done publicly outside of a, uh, ongoing uh, reading of a statement at the city council. Any, any other thoughts on that?
Any thoughts on that from council as to how we might go about this?
Honestly, um, I'm, I'm kind of reluctant to just approve, uh, a, a statement without seeing any correspondence from an Indian tribe that this is going to serve the purpose that we want it to serve. Um, I would, I, I don't have any problems approving something like this in the future. I, I do want to have some sort of a, um, a statement or you said that you have a friend who's a consultant with some Indian tribes, which is, uh, which is awesome. But I, I do want to have some sort of a correspondence from someone giving the official seal of approval that, that the steps that we are going to be taking are going to be the best way of honoring the people that we're trying to honor. I just want to have that sort of statement before I feel comfortable approving what is drafted.
Uh, anybody else wish to comment? No, I'm, I'm not going to get into a big, long, drawn-out conversation about it because I think that Katie and Paul Strobel have put that all that I would have said out there. So I'm piggybacking on what they've said. I feel that we need more information before, uh, we pass this, but, um, I, I would suggest that we get with the, uh, Native American tribes and kind of go, I think it would be interesting and a learning experience for me, so.
Kimberly, is that something that you can get pretty easily?
I, I think you should be able to with all the, the main tribes we have, the Graham Ron.
I would think so.
It seems to me that we would have, uh, uh, something to work with there, um, but I don't know. I, I, I don't know.
I would say if we do want to do that in a official capacity there, um, I would hope that we would bring someone on in a consultant role that can be compensated for the, uh, emotional labor and the life experience that we're going to be asking them to help us to, uh, craft this acknowledgement. So I just want to make sure that that is, is known and, um, accepted by this council that they're, they're, that, that does come with, uh, additional considerations.
Let's duly noted, I think. So I guess we're at that point. Um, if there is a motion on the table, um, you can put it out there or we can, look into this a little bit more, uh, figure out a way that this works for everyone. Uh, it's up to you. I would ask that somebody either put up a motion or that we agree that we should go through a process and maybe look at expanding out on this and trying to find a way that it's, it works for everyone. So I don't know.
I'm not necessarily proposing that anyone redraft this. I'm just saying that maybe we should email this to the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ronde and ask for their blessing in order to do this. And if they have any input, then they would give it. And if they don't have any input and they say, no, we think it's great, why don't you do it? I would be happy then to make this proclamation.
Okay, is that agreeable to everyone? Or how does everybody feel about that? Paul?
I like the thoughts on that. I'm still hesitant to add it as an ongoing statement to the city council. I've listened to other city councils, listened to Portland. I tried to pick up for other ones having a statement in there. I have not heard it in other council meetings. I'd be reluctant to add it to ours. I'd rather have it as some other public way of having it stated.
Justin, Jerry, weigh in. We need some other input.
I agree with Paul on this one. Yeah, I'm a little reluctant to have to read it every, but I think there's a good way to publish it, whether it be on the website or another means.
Can we do it like quarterly or by end, you know, like twice a year? You know, I don't want to just completely discount it, but, yeah, I agree, not, you know, not once a month. I think that's a little overboard, but, you know, quarterly or, you know, twice a year or publish it somewhere where we can, you know, where it's very obvious.
Okay, I'm hearing a lot of different directions here. So I'm thinking it might be better to table this one until we get a better understanding of what exactly we want out of this and where we want to go with it. Is that something that's okay with you? Or is that something that I'm completely off base here? You're going to have to nod your head yes or no and tell me. I'm getting a lot of nodding, so.
I was hearing more that we're going to send it off to the tribes and get their blessing and move forward from there.
Okay, is that agreeable to everyone? Okay, all right. So that's what we will do with this. So I'm assuming we don't need a vote on this at this point, just an acknowledgement that we're going to send it off to the tribes to see if we can get their response. Is that what I'm getting from this? Okay, and that's agreed on everyone? Okay, all right. So I'm assuming I'm done with this part. I'm going to move right along here to the next citizen and community group comment. Do we have anybody on the line?
Okay, we're going to go to John first. John, please come on, state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hey, John, can you hear us? Take your mute off.
I'm working on it. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I got you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, councilors, city manager Denise, others, thank you for giving me a few minutes here. I wanted to talk about the George Fire Station. That was built in mid-'70s. They had some fires up there and the community donated land. And the community supported that stage for up through maybe the late '80s to the '90s. And we did a survey a few years back, and the average calls up there run from 10 to 15 calls a year maximum. So it's hard to justify a station up there. It appears like the community, the last 10 years or so, really doesn't have support for it anymore. They don't have any volunteers up there like they used to in the older days, previous times. And we've tried everything to keep volunteers up there. We tried student programs to go up there. We put $80,000 in that building remodeling it to make it look good. But who wants to sit up there way up in far out of town in the woods there when you only have 15 calls a year? And we tried volunteers, and the guys just didn't want to stay up there because there was not enough activity. Now, we do keep equipment up there, but the people up there get a false sense of security because they drive by that fire station all the time. And it's thinking that when they dial the phone number, they're going to get help. But they're probably not going to get it as quick as they'd think. We had a call up there earlier this afternoon, and they run engine 318 from over there on Jeb Road and 211, that station over there. And so you see, it's a long way up there. And now, we're going to put the state mandates that all public buildings be made earthquake-proof. So the majority of the board of directors voted to put $400,000 in that building up there to make it earthquake-proof when you only have maximum 15 calls a year. Now, I did talk to one person up there that he is interested and maybe trying to get some community volunteers, but I just wanted to give you that side of the story. They keep wanting to man that George Station and put volunteers up there, and it's hard to justify that, in my opinion, when you have that low call volume. The people in the Dodge District, Tamala Mountain Road, they don't get that same resource. But like I say, the community built that station and supported it in the '70s. The women ran that station in daytime, and the men, when they come home at work, would run it at night. So I know I don't have too much time, so that's just a brief history of the George Station. And one other thing I wanted to clarify, that when I did talk about the budget, I put out the figure of the all funds, the total budget of $4.9 million. And I've had several other people, Facebook posts and stuff, want me to clarify that, and I did clarify it. And we've got just a little over $3 million if we could operate our fire station, three people on shift, 24/7. Seems like a lot of interest. A lot of our volunteers, I had 12 contact me the other day, be willing to come back. And it wouldn't take them long to get online because they've been with us and they only left us, you know, three or four years ago. So getting them recertified and online, so those are a few things I wanted to clarify. But that George Station, to me, is very frustrating to put that much money in a facilities that only gets maximum 15 calls a year. Thank you very much for letting me speak my piece.
Well, we appreciate you, John, and thank you for your comments. Are there any questions for John before we let him go? No? Okay, John, thank you.
And now we have Lisa Holman. Lisa, state your name and address, and we've got five minutes.
You there, Lisa?
You're still muted, Lisa. Can you take yourself off of mute?
Oh, I think she's not figuring it out. Do we have anybody else on there? We could go before her? While she's figuring that out.
Yeah, we just had someone put up Liz, where was it? I lost it. Liz Davidson, was it?
Okay, yeah. All right, great. Are you there, Liz?
I think she went off, Sadie.
Did she go off?
Yeah, she was there, and now she, now, oh, there she is. Okay.
Okay. Liz, are you there?
Liz, you're on mute.
Do they have to hit star nine to unmute or something?
There she is.
My computer's a little bit flooded with fun, so I apologize. First, I want to thank you guys for allowing me a few minutes to speak. I really appreciate it. More than anything, and I'm sure that you guys have already heard some of these things before, let me prestate where I live. I live at 37680 Southeast Fall Creek Road. For you guys, I just really want to take just a few minutes to encourage you guys to do your due diligence. Obviously, I believe you already have, but I want to encourage you to continue to do so in regards to the support of the merger with Clackamas Fire. I guess a lot of it is, is I feel that there were some definite failures that happened. And in my opinion, you know, before we go jumping into merging with them, we need to be very cautious and examine the answers to the questions as to what happened. So that's just kind of my deal. I don't think that we should be jumping into merging with Clackamas Fire until we really get some solid answers. So I think it'd be irresponsible for us to go ahead and jump in and say, yeah, we're going to do it without those answers. So anyway, if anybody has any questions, go ahead, but.
I do, Liz. When you say answers to questions, can you give me one particular question that you would like to see Clackamas Fire answer?
No, well, there's a few. So my husband, my husband was up here on Fall Creek with George Youngberg and the rest of them. And then my husband went and he worked up on Day Hill as well. And so there's things that I know from him exactly, you know, facts that happened that he observed for himself firsthand. So one of the things is, why wasn't Clackamas Fire putting water on the fire? And I'm not saying they weren't putting water on the fire in terms of structures, but they weren't putting water in the fire when it was threatening structures, when it was getting closer to areas where it was going to threaten the structure. The other thing is, is why were the police called on them? So, and I think those are valid questions. The inability for Clackamas Fire and unwillingness to work with the local people is a great concern to me. We had resources that weren't utilized like they should have been. And I understand, you know, given certain circumstances where you have to be cautious about that, but we weren't in normal circumstances.
Thank you, Liz. I appreciate you asking those questions to me because I've been trying to remain in communication with Chief Charlton from Clackamas Fire District and ask these kinds of questions as they're being posed to me personally. So these are definitely questions I would love to get the answers for you. That being said, I also understand that Clackamas Fire has been working on reaching out to people personally to try to get their firsthand accounts. You said your husband was there fighting the fire with George Youngberg and his crew. Is there, has Clackamas Fire reached out to your family in particular? And if so, how, what was your willingness in order, in wanting to work with them and give them your feedback and try to work with them to move into a future where we're cooperating?
Well, Clackamas Fire has not reached out to me in terms of willingness. I'm willing to talk to them personally myself. I can't speak for my husband, but I can only speak for myself. But I also feel there's a lot more people out there, not just Youngbergs, not just Brett Perrys, you've got Tracy Kameyer. There's a lot of people that work with Tracy Kameyer of on Day Hill area. And there's a lot of those people that have all of these same questions. So, you know, asking me specifically may be fine, but I wasn't actually there. And they think that those people that were really there on the front lines doing these things, those are the people that, you know, have the firsthand experience. But I think they owe it to all of Estacada to answer those questions, not just me or my husband or the Kameyers or the Youngbergs.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Liz. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yes, Liz, we all thank you. And is there any more questions for Liz before we let her go? No? Okay, thank you, Liz, for your questions. And I think, you know, getting the answers would be good. Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the list?
Just Lisa, it looks like she's still on mute, so I don't know if she can get that off or not.
Lisa, you're on, or can you press your spacebar? Oh, she might not have a microphone.
Oh, maybe that's what the deal is.
Yeah, that would do it.
Can you give her the call-in number so she can call in?
Yeah, maybe you could send that to her. Are there anybody else?
Oh, there she is.
Oh, she's on?
Oh.
Oh, Lisa?
Well, her microphone thing went off or her mute thing.
Oh. Okay, well, she's still having trouble there. Do we have anybody else?
No, that's it.
Okay. All right, well, we thank everybody for commenting tonight. We're sorry we couldn't get to you, Lisa. But maybe if you could write in and maybe send an email into the city, and we'll make sure that everybody gets that as to your questions or answers or whatever you wanted to talk about. We'd appreciate that. I'm moving on to mayor and council reports and comments. I'm going to start off with you, Jerry. What would you like to say?
Put me on the spot. I don't have anything real big to say. Just want to thank everybody for coming. You know, this community is coming together, and we're making the right steps towards, you know, towards progress. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Oh, get up and vote. Everybody vote.
That's it. Katie?
I think I made plenty of comments earlier tonight. I just want to thank everybody for everything that they do, everybody from the CCSO to the CFD and the EFD and everybody in between. You guys are all amazing, and I look forward to seeing everybody on Saturday at the Estacada Strong Parade.
All right, great, thank you. Kimberly Abels?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks to everybody. I'm noticing that we're getting more and more participants and comments, and that makes me excited that we're hearing from more people and hearing from a lot of different voices. So I'm glad that we're moving in a really great direction. And I just want to thank again everybody for being here and for working through us, through all of this with us, and we're all learning as we go. And, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
Not much more to add, just thanks to the staff for all their hard work that they continue to do, getting these ready for us. And then echo what Kimberly said, it's great seeing all the people listening in and participating as well. Thank you for your input. Very appreciated.
I agree. Okay, thank you, Paul. Justin?
Yeah, thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Yeah. And now me. Well, I thank you all tonight. We have made some strides. There's things that have happened tonight that needed to happen, and I was glad to see that you all chose the right direction to go in. We're working together as a council. That's, that's good. We're doing things that matter to everyone, and I think people are starting to notice. And I appreciate every one of you for making this time. I know it's a sacrifice, and sometimes longer than others. But I appreciate all of you and, oh, I just want to mention one thing. Sorry, somebody just reminded me. Thursday, October 15th, we have the Estacada Wildfire Heroes Celebration at Key Bank and the Harvest Market Square. So it'll be from 3:00 to 7:00. So if all of you could maybe stop in and say a few words and shake a few hands and congratulate a few people, we greatly appreciate that, and I thank you. And that's, staff, you did a great job putting all this out there. We appreciate you, so thank you. And this meeting is adjourned, so thank you.